Well.
We had also mid thirties, then you had our like mid forties and then you had.
He says.
You want me to sit? I like.
Tea hole on your tongue?
The ball of the water.
Funny it throws like a play if you could pull out.
Oh.
All right, seven o'clock, let's get this meeting going, call the order. Tony Colinas.
The United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation.
Roll call.
In it.
Here.
You did.
Here.
Leonard.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
And Frank here. In years.
Public comment.
I just wanted to introduce myself really quick. I'm taking over for Sandra and I have things to fill, I realize, but my name is Sarah Danford and I'm looking forward to the journey ahead and building a stronger relationship with all of you. And the community, so. That's all I had to say.
Good job, welcome. All right. Going to the number one treasury report, bill is approved of minutes for the town hall and the last month's meeting. We always, is it consent consented?
Yes.
I'll make a motion go through the consent.
Need a second?
A second.
All in favor? Our discussions. Go discuss all in favor.
I.
I.
I oppose. Moving to number two. Motion to open up a hearing for the purpose of bug or the for the proposed budget.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Second.
All agree?
Yes.
Any opposed? Alright, so public hearing is open for the proposed budget. That you on stage or?
Public.
Any comments from the public? Come on, Adam, you want us to spend more money? No comments from the public? Need to make a motion to close the hearing. Make a motion to close, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Public hearing does now close. Number three, budget summary. Summary, 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 same thing.
So the budget summary has all the updated military incident. Um, that we've got from the county. The one that, there's only one that is going up and that is for you guys to vote on and that's the road bond. Um, I brought it up. Point two to bring it up to its max, which was um, voted in two thousand thirteen, which we discussed in the finance meeting. Um, to pay for all of our bond. About principal and interest for the next, just right here.
I mean, the finance committee recommends to do that thing?
Yes.
Where we go, oh, down.
Alright, any more comments? Question? Nothing? That was just information or something?
Now do you need to vote it on tonight?
We'll vote on that right now then? Alright. So we need to vote on the increase in. Whatever you, what are you? Give me the legal terminology.
With our, our road about the road debt millage.
Yes.
Needs to be increased to two point six.
Okay.
Max out the road that milling to two point six.
And he's currently at?
It's only, it's under a hundred dollars for, it'd be under like fifty dollars per.
That's just bringing it back up to where it was.
Yeah, just to max it over because that's the bond. Um, it's, it's firing, they're getting older, the principal is increasing, so. And there are, uh, there was stuff in the packet, uh, that showed a schedule that would be in there anyways, the schedule for it with the bond. Um, Ben Zinsky, we got the bond through what they suggested. Their, um, military to yet. And in twenty twenty five, it was suggested to be two point eight. But we had voted in two point six in two thousand thirteen as the max, so.
And how long was that for? Ten years, you said?
It'll expire in twenty six. The.
Thirteen years.
Yeah, the millage will expire next, next year, twenty twenty six.
Everyone understand what we're doing then? Alright, let's do a roll calls.
In it.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beavers.
Yes. Through. Number four. Motion to approve preliminary budget.
Nothing's changed right from the left end.
The only thing that's changed is all the revenue from the millage rates. But I put all the numbers in that we're already be capturing. The correct ones. Before it was just.
Let's get a motion, open up for discussion. You there?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, first and second, any discussion? No discussion, alright, let's go. Voting to approve it, do we need roll call?
Oh.
What the heck? Cause I know you love to roll calls.
By the way.
And it's.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beavers.
Yes.
Right, 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 preliminary. Motion to approve the application for the T-Mobile hometown grant.
The one that we talked about at the um, town hall meeting that I was talking about for the path of the walking path in the Flint Park yard. And that is the quote that's in there is the quote for the path and then, um, the ADA's name that we'd like to put in there also. Um, we haven't gotten the quote. Um, for the actual extra path. That we talked about, haven't gotten that yet, so it's just an information, I just need approval from you guys to apply this.
And this was the one that there was no match.
Yeah, right, seventy dollar note. No match.
Alright, so need a motion to allow her to apply to the grant.
No move.
Any need a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is it possible to add the second pathway to this?
Well, when we get the quote, then we'll know, you know, yeah, and then I, you know, once I get into the grant and stuff and see, you know, if we can crunch the numbers and make it fifty thousand, even if it ends up bad, but yeah, we can.
The nice thing with that grant is it's forty two.
Yeah. Keep applying for it. So. Once we have it done, we'll keep applying for it, okay, to give it to us.
Alright, all in favor to approve the application to be sent in?
I.
I.
Any opposed? That is carried. Alright, motion to approve C two A amendment to kayak launch. That you?
That would be us.
Okay, do we need a motion, then we can have discussion?
Yeah.
Oh wait, motion.
Alright, got a motion, need a second?
I'll second.
Alright, now we can open discussion.
We just talked about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
What was that?
Yeah, so for the kayak, um, the designing, uh, services went up to, because it's been so long since it was designed, it needs to be redesigned, if I remember correctly.
So, yep, and, uh, we started that project in twenty twenty one. And, uh, did some conceptual designs and then, uh, also did some funding applications. And then we were involved with some additional funding, uh, information and application work, which carried a little bit more into what would have been the original budget. And so, once we were able to get the, the recent grant from, uh, landed water. Uh, we started the project back up, picked up from that conceptual design that we should use for the grant applications. And finish that off, and so, based on the earlier work. And the duration of time from two thousand twenty one to today. Uh, there was a little, little bit of, uh, additional dollar fees for completing that design. That's really targeting getting what was, uh, set up for final plans, uh, the permitting, the legal. And I gave things right, and there, uh, other portion that's on there is for bidding. That was, uh, never in the original, uh, proposal, because when we started that project. We knew we needed to get a design squared away and that city would be looking for funding. So the focus was really on just getting that, that, that in play for it.
A total thirteen thousand five hundred.
You were originally hired to do the kayak launch design.
To, yeah, to start through that process, uh, get it to a point where we could, uh.
Buy it for the grant.
Grant funding, correct, and so we, once the grant money had been picked up. We started, we restarted that portion of the work, took from that, uh, conceptual design, which was where it was left off. And finished it off here.
So. I'm assuming that all came with the cost as well. You didn't do it for free.
Correct.
How much was that? Did we pay?
I, I have to double check on where we stood on that one at that point, I should.
But it didn't, but it obviously you wouldn't be asking, we didn't pay for a design.
Fully completed, correct. So our, our original proposal brought the design process in order to get far enough to get the grant. To be able to apply for grant, we, in most of the grant programs. We need to have a cer- certain level of design in place to be able to establish the appropriate cost for the project. And to, uh, be able to get the the grant reviewers to be able to have full understanding what's intended. And that we've added enough to, to know what kind of surprises we should be anticipating in that. So it's more of a conceptual to maybe preliminary level of design. And we went through, uh, some design options with council at that time in public, we had, uh, some additional review meetings, things that weren't initially in the proposal. So that spurred into a little bit of what we had in that budget. So what we ended up doing is using the balance of what budget was remaining from that. And then this is the, this is that difference.
What do you anticipate is gonna change from the current to the future? If we were to prove this. Wh- what changes will we see in the plan?
That plan sets now complete. So the portion of that is gonna be whatever might change, so what was originally in that package was really just a single sheet and some details. And now there's a construction plan set established, so it's got grades, it's got plantings, it's got, uh.
So you've already done the work.
Uh, this work has been completed, correct. For the design side of that.
So this is a bill that's due. Basically.
On the design side, that would be. Yeah, the, the difference has already been extended there.
So what's the other side?
Uh, the other part is the bidding. So.
Oh, it's in here, okay.
Yeah, so that part's in there and, uh, eventually there would be some construction requirements. Services, once it actually gets through that part. So right now D N R has the, the documents for the review. And once they come back, there might be a few comments, things that might need to be addressed from that perspective. And then, uh, and then that can be, uh, they can go off to for bidding. And, and those dollars are the second part of blessing that, uh, of course.
Wait, correct me if I'm wrong, can, or, cause I wasn't here, but the council or Greg or whoever was, the council already approved for a hundred and fifty thousand for this grant to, to match, right?
Yeah, that was our.
So this would just pull as from that, that's already been approved.
And we're not going over that.
Right, it, we haven't reached over a hundred fifty, I mean, we haven't even graphic surface, but we don't even think about it. Yeah, so that would just be part of that a hundred fifty thousand that is going to go towards cost to put as our match to.
We've already allocated.
And, right, it's already allocated, this is just.
It's approving to pay them the actual money that the four years.
That's needed for the, yeah.
Do we expect that we're gonna stay within that hundred fifty?
I don't know, I mean, we expect. We have to get the bids back, really, I mean, we don't have the bids to even see.
And unfortunately, because the grant was done in twenty one and so long ago. We have no idea, we aren't gonna know until we get them.
Would I assume correctly that we approve this thirteen five? And then once construction starts taking place. We'll get another bill?
We, we'll have us another proposal for construction services, once we know when that work will actually move to construction. So as of right now, we have to get through the approval process with uh, D N R tied to the grant. That will depend on when that project can be bid. And once we know the bid time, we'll know, is it something they wanna try to be able to, to accomplish yet this year? Or is it something we'll bid and actually go to construction in next season?
So I.
So.
Next season's another year. I would assume that we'll probably see a bump again?
We haven't provided the services for construction yet. For that.
Okay.
Because, because.
Cause I'll fall under that, okay, we won't have to revisit this again, it'll be something else.
Yeah, this is what we're anticipating would go through, uh, the process here in the next few months, depending on when we get answers back.
So my, I know that the kayak launch has been something that has been approved, it's been in the works for a long time, um, I I'll make a motion to approve this, but I hope we stay within that hundred fifty, because I've had people reach out to me that that river is not even passable. So we're putting a lot of money into something that potentially can't. When they wrote the grant, we were with the, um, what it called, the looking, the looking glass. And they were part, they were actually, some of the letters were written that they would be cleaning up that area and making it all.
Correct, I mean, it's not passable, but.
Right.
I will, I will make a motion to prove this expense.
We got a motion, need a second? I'll second. Hey, any further discussion? Did we, are we under contract, I mean? Do we know how many? The process of how many phases this goes through? I- if we have the design phase, then the bidding phase, then the construction phase, how many phases are out there that we can continually see visiting us?
Oh, that would be it.
That would get.
Yeah, during the construction phase, we we would put in whatever, uh, would be for the post-construction, which is usually a little, some record documents, uh, filed. And that should be looking at whatever closeouts tied to working through that grant program as well.
Yeah, the grant's gonna have a deadline. We're not gonna be able to put it off and put it off as well, they'll have, once we get these, get through this bid process, then they will probably give us whatever time limit we have to get it finished and done. That's all.
What kind of timeframe are we? For constructions? Are we at least a year out or six, like this season?
If, if we could advertise here in the next month or two, they could potentially do that construction yet the season, the big hangup could be how, if there's any holdup on actually getting the launch itself. Uh, those systems sometimes have, uh, oh, uh, lead time issue, depending on how much demand is coming through there. Most of that stuff has improved quite a bit the last couple of years. Uh, but when we were running through the height of COVID, we had really long lead times for a lot of different things, the generator project could be an example from that, where we would be told it was over a year before we would see a generator. Uh, but this equipment, we're anticipating it's improved quite a bit on the timing for that, so.
Could you expand a little bit on launch, you, you mentioned the launch?
It's a, it's a particular system, it's a floating, uh, ramp. Essentially that is set up so that you can set the kayak in that'll hold the kayak steady. So that you can actually get in and out of the kayak and then, and then slide.
So it's not like pulling up to a dock with a, or flapping a kayak in the water next to a dock?
This, it's, it's set up to be, uh, more of an ADA accessible.
Okay.
Uh, launch system, so.
Prevents your kayak from flipping over too.
Sleepy hollow.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it just makes it quite a bit easier to getting in, in and out.
And the grounds up top of my head, that was just gonna be dirt gravel. A lot of millions.
The, the majority of the site is gonna be in, correct, an aggregate, uh, parking and drive, there are some.
Not paid.
There are some con- concrete areas that are gonna be out there for ADA accessibility, it's really handling, uh, the ADA parking spot. Uh, the, there's some sidewalk to the ramp itself. And there's a plan for pad for having, uh, or body out there as well, so that there's somewhere, um, could be, we'll access. But that's, that's the extent of really, uh, paving type work, that's why I think schedule wise, it's still something that, that happened uh, for construction activity yet this year, depending on when it could actually go off with it.
Any further discussion?
Okay, let's do a roll calls.
In it.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beavers.
Yes.
Oh. Good to go. Motion to approve C two A is amendment of construction services in the twenty twenty five city, the street rehabilitation and school parking lot.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, need a second, second. You got a motion, second, now we go over the discussion.
For the school parking lot. That's right here.
Yes.
Are we paying for all of that?
No.
Yes, this is an amendment to our bid for our roads, we added that parking lot in there.
To make it cheaper, so we get along.
Yeah. Our portion of that parking lot will be fifty two. I see that. We have a hundred and fifteen hour.
So what we have in front of you right now is the amendment for the engineering services to address, you know, disturb the contract for that structures. So we have, uh, planned for onsite staff members uh, recording data, making sure we're getting that built in accordance with the intended, uh, design. Now, uh, we have packaged that up, it's really the schools' design, so we're we're really just looking at, uh, going through the construction and process for that. Uh, there's material testing that's in there as well, staking. So we have, um, services set up for that, there is, and we separated them. Because we were understanding that there might be some cost share of how things are gonna be handled from the parking lot side. So that work, even though they went out in the same construction contract, we will track those that effort separately. So things that are, are going to work for the streets, where things that are going to work for the parking lot. So that can be, uh, works with whatever agreement is gonna be in place with the school.
And the completion date for the parking lot? Um, I'm assuming the schools, letting you know the school starts August twenty first?
Yeah, we, we have that set up in the construction contract as well, there might be some lingering items that are tied to closeout of the contract. But we're, we're expecting to have the construction work completed before then.
Okay.
See, that substantially complete early on, yes, yeah.
When was it? When do you know it would start?
Uh, it can start as early as June ninth.
Soon as they're out of school.
Yeah.
We're talking about just the area that the millings. Which, or does it go?
No. It kind of is, it kind of goes from the school, um, towards Woodhall, uh, it's larger than.
Park right now, or when they, where they drop off.
Yeah.
That whole thing they want done all the way to Woodhall. That's gonna be one.
One big parking lot.
It's all fast driving toward the long street, okay.
Yeah.
With, um, some sidewalk improvements, um, there's some updated street light in there, um, and then as well as the you kind of air drop off. Turnaround, um, parking lot that faces between school and.
But we won't pay for all that. That will be this, that's not what we partnered with them, the only portion, that's why they're keeping it separate, the only portion we have is where the the property that we bought, that had the old storage unit and everything, that's our part, that's why they're keeping it separate. But when we met with the school, the last thing they said was, who's gonna take rain on it? And I said, well, we will, because if you guys don't know what you're doing and don't have an engineer, we have an engineer. And they were okay with that, so now we make a decision tonight, um, on that, um, when we get to that part. And then we'll take the school and say, this is what the city is here to, this is what they agreed on, and it's up to them to also agree on it. And if they don't, then we'll have to come back and.
Do those all over.
Yes.
And does this, it seems like I remember there being a sign.
Yes.
Is that still included?
D D A.
The D D A.
But all electrical and all that is.
Yeah, part of that. Uh, no, that was in the bid, that's in the.
Was that in the bid?
I think that was in the bid, electrical.
Conduit, yeah, to the corner, yeah. Put it placed underneath the parking lot, so the future work won't disturb.
Yeah.
Provisions are there to complete that work, but that's not all in there, so at least conduit to get out there, if there's electrical needs for the sign.
And a sign.
So the amendment that is here for fifteen thousand is just for all the, um, new design that had to be done and the bidding that we put in and that will go toward their, like, they would pay half, we would pay half. And then, um, we approved the hundred and fifty thousand for the parking lot. I don't remember when you guys did that, twenty three? But.
Three, two?
Yeah.
Something like that, so that'll go.
Okay, for long, I'm almost, I was the last council. When the school board came and spoke to them, probably three months before the election. They voted a max of seventy five towards school parking lot was, by memory.
A hundred and, yeah, it was. I thought it was one fifty. The, the other, there was.
I thought the superintendent asked for.
Yes, for more.
Well, they asked, because there could be contingency, well, but if this, the soil had to be trucked back and forth, and I memory serves correct, um, council just said, well, we can go up to seventy five, but we aren't gonna pass a motion to have them open a market.
Well, yeah, I didn't do that, but I thought it was a hundred.
It's a hundred, it's a hundred and fifty, only, uh, the only reason I know is that I know where the funds are coming from. And I have it, it's already set aside, after that meeting, I set the amount, um, aside, so it's already in its own. I put it in. So it's over in the C I P for the parking lot.
Yeah.
But there was also, there was.
Yeah, yeah, I could have.
I mean, that may have been an earlier one, too.
And we've gone through this.
Yeah. It was very confusing, because there was actually.
I just, we had to go back. I was just on there.
I thought I remembered one.
RJ, if you ever hear. Ready, go. That's on, I was trying to find it.
I don't remember.
Seventy five.
I thought that would have been the fifty percent.
The name's like, we had a June.
See, I always saw it was fifty percent up to a total of one fifty.
Yes.
So like, whatever it costs. We would take fifty percent of it, the school would take fifty percent of it, if it reached a hundred and fifty, then our half, our half would be one fifty. And then we would have to decide if we were gonna continue or not.
Well, then they phased it out, so.
A hundred and fifty was. The total project cost.
That's what we were gonna do.
Yeah.
Then the school is gonna match that or go.
Hundred and fifty from the school, one fifty from us, so three hundred for the total project cost. Seven thousand dollars just in.
Yeah.
And this is at the construction, so.
Right.
That's, that's all the other roads too. That doesn't, that's not.
So I would assume getting to this point. There was fifty, sixty, eighty thousand dollars spent.
Well, we we've spent, what do we spend on? Thirty thousand?
Thirty, we spent thirty on this.
And and what's there now to help with the sewers and stuff, because that was.
Do we know if um? The dirt is okay, I mean, we've already dug up, uh do, are we not dealing with that anymore, contaminant?
We have provisions in the construction contract for allowance to if we encounter it. The baseline that was done for the site and the due care plan indicate that we couldn't encounter it. They, we don't have anything to say that they really ran into that much while they were dealing with it on that site, anything that had to go to. Uh special landfill, um some of that material may still need to be followed maybe to uh. Lancing. But that has to, that's significant cost differences between those types of things, so. We have plans in here to be able to do onsite testing. While that work is going on, so we can do confirmation of of where that soil really ought to be planted to. If we run into anything that uh seems like this is a new column.
I mean, for the overall picture, we're not gonna go to one fifty, because that's already been set. So, and that's, and a lot of it was a contingency of the soil contamination, because they dug up, they found tanks that nobody knew about. Field. Which.
The stone that they would be there because it was a gas station.
Yeah.
Where would they go otherwise?
Alright, so let's, any more discussion on this part, or we ready to? Just approving the amendment, because it's already been set up. Ready, no more discussion, alright.
Well, we breathe. Treat Street, Grand River. Obviously, that's in addition to the city streets rehab project.
Oh, uh Treat Street and.
Because they weren't in before.
Is Grant in there still, or did we take that one?
No, that's, then he's next.
Okay, that's a, so.
So, so this is in addition to other. A project that's already underway and.
Cause we wanted. Yeah, we wanted to put them together to save.
Treat Street and.
Though, yeah, those were gonna be bitted out, and then when we brought up the parking lot, they wanted to rebid it, then we added the parking lot so that we could get better deal.
Yeah, plus that way the mobilization be able one.
So the amendment is for these two items, obviously.
Well, it's actually for the parking lot, because we, we were gonna bid out the, the roads originally like normal. But then we added the parking lot, so technically the parking lot's coming in on the road bid.
Yeah.
As we were set up to do the, the two roads.
Yep, the construction services for, for the cities. It was gonna be a standalone project for Treat Street.
Right.
Um and then Grand River, and then I believe discussion with the school happened and said, okay, we'll package that in with ours, because typically more. Quantity or valuable work, you see better, a better cost, right, where they were to do their own bid, right, and the city was gonna do their own. To do their mobilization costs. You're essentially, if you package it up more work under one contractor, see typically see that. And you'll notice how we have it broken out throughout, and that's detracts separately, and that's in the city's best interest too, because to get better cost for the parking lot, because. That one fifty is going towards caution.
Two hundred and forty hours for the parking lot.
Yeah, we have about.
Six weeks.
That is six weeks, and then we have about just shy of four weeks. Uh construction for Treat Street and Grand River, and that's it, that's if they were gonna have essentially one crew on the, on the parking lot, get that done. Or vice versa, right, and then jump to Treat Street, in reality, they'll probably do that.
These are your hours, not the people.
Yes.
Making stuff happen.
This is for onsite inspection, um and you'll see that we have subs in there as well, and we have that cost broken out, that's for construction staking. Um so they can build the street and the parking lot at the right grade, make sure everything's draining, and then um you know, inspection, and then we have material testing. So that's compaction, so you put a cover in, a year later you will have that, that dip, and then.
And if you do, is there warranty work?
From the contractor, yeah, there's, there's warranty coverage through portions of that uh.
That's what we're paying you for is warranty coverage, aren't you, aren't we?
No, we're, we're.
But but you're to assure.
We're, that's built.
We're out there making sure that contractors is following the intended uh documents, right?
Yeah, especially after the last. We're really glad they were here, because you wouldn't have finished the work and we would have already paid him. And we wouldn't have. Yeah, because we, when they wanted to check, we called them and said, can we write them a check, and they're like, oh no, they're not done, and. They said they got, that's the move to do, and so we said, you're not getting a check.
It's, and and part of that be to a shop drawing review, so what mix are they using, is it acceptable? Um what I, what aggregate are they bringing onsite, like compacted to rate density, so.
And then another discussion. Nope, alright, so two roll calls.
Enes.
Yes.
Edik.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Edik.
Yeah. Alright, uh motion to approve mid Michigan pavement and materials company bid for twenty twenty five local street and parking lot.
So this is the bid for, we didn't talk about it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Score.
Any discussion on the bid? Kids, all in favor, I. Next one on the list. Motion to approve chief of police contract.
Make a motion to approve the contract, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I.
Congrats, Dan.
Discuss raising the rate of non-residentials for the Langsberg Cemetery plots.
I don't know, they put together, what you see is what other people are charging. What we're charging.
Didn't we do this? Recently?
Raised it, no, thought that was.
That's the weekend.
Okay.
The other was burial.
Okay.
So is it now also increasing the um, the resident one as well, from four to five hundred?
Um yeah, that was what the suggestion was.
Okay. I thought, so it's just the title of it said, discuss the raising the rates of the non-resident.
Yeah, but.
Those five hundred for residents.
And we would like keep the, because we've got a lot of um cremains only in infected A, B, C, and D. The old part, there, you know, we've got them listed as only cremains, so. We thought, you know, keep those at a lower price, maybe get people to use those lots, but some of them are not. And, you know, we're not like a whole roll that's empty, it's two here, two here, two here. So, you know, if we sold those at a maybe a discounted rate, we might be able to fill those. Some people wanna be in the old part, so.
Yeah. Um we'll be adopted suggested prices of residential five hundred, non-resident for thousand that remains.
Need a second?
Second.
Now we can discuss.
We anticipate that this will cover the shortage, I guess. Make up for some of the shortages on the.
I don't think you can ever make money on a cemetery, because they're there forever, and you have to maintain them forever, so, but it does. Help a little, because we're pretty low, or still, I mean, obviously, we. We, we've never had a non-resident deed, so, anybody from, and in, in this, you know, the, the city. Residents are the ones who pay for the upkeep of it.
Any further discussion? Alright, vote all in favor, say I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion to approve HSC services.
Our successor.
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Increase of seventeen twenty five. Fifty dollars per month more, or? Was it seventeen twenty five per month?
Yes, yeah.
And it was. Sixteen fifty.
Was one, it was, I think it was. Yeah. Okay. It, it goes off.
Like an extra thousand a year. Have we ever priced this out to? Who else there he does, and I know they do a lot of community use.
I don't.
He spends four hours a month here.
Oh wow, I mean, besides.
I'm assuming there's homework.
If you want us to bid it.
No, I mean, for him.
Well, he, I mean, there, he's constantly doing trainings and it's technically. He'll call us, or whoever he's from the county, he, I mean, he works for us in other places, not just where he's here.
Yeah.
That's what you mean.
Yeah, we can call him anytime and get information and.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is whatever we need from them, but they're here. I, I am, I don't, I'm guessing they're not overpriced, but I don't know for sure, we can't say that, they, they are, but. They've always gone up, since I've been here, it's the same.
They don't really have much to do with that too much.
Yeah, that's kind of their. Their heads are tied to there.
They have to raise them two percent every year.
Whatever the state.
Will the state tell them to do that, that's the state, not the city.
That's why they, that's why when you come in for a review, if we can't do anything about it, they say go to the tribunal.
Yeah.
Where's the tribunal? It's the government body of the state. We have to take your next, um many complaints to. Have we done anything yet? We've got a motion. Very emotional. Any more discussion, guys? Alright, the only comment I would say is, I think it would be good to look to see what other price it is, at least for the next year. We do, this, this is a yearly contract, just to make sure that's, I mean, I just. My personal opinion is I think we're highly taxed, but that's my person. But if, if, I mean, if we can get out there, if they're at a good price, and this, what, what the basics are, then. We won't need to change it. Yeah, pretty much, so I mean, for right now, um let's do a roll call, somewhat of anything. We're approving this contract.
Enes.
Yes.
Edik.
Yes.
Hunter.
Miller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Yes. Library fiscal agency agreements.
Well, we have it, it's at our lawyers now.
Well, it's in snail mail.
Yeah, we're waiting for snail mail to.
Five fifty, I ran over there to see if, perhaps it was here yet, and then this, so I. There are things that we want to change, or add back in that we're thinking of before. And I agree with some of them, so, I don't know what else he wrote though, so that was just a bit.
So, um. This is the contract to the library and um to also surface the agent.
Unrelated to the potential purchase of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. This is just redoing our agreement, that'd be.
I suggest, because I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't suggest that we vote on it. My suggestion is because we're gonna have to bring it back, because it's gonna be probably a couple things, so I would just. For the next month, look at it, make sure that there's something that you guys wanna change on it when you come back, and then we'll, by then we'll have. And as soon as I get his, we'll, I'll give it to you guys, so that you can be ready for the next month. So, some back history, you guys gave it to the library, you had Claire, I think, helped you guys with it. Um we went to Claire, Claire helped us with it, and then we um had our library attorney. And she's the one that drafted this up, yeah, she took things out, she had um her reasonings for that, um. So I'm sure when you guys get it back, then we're gonna take it off to our attorney to. That's why I'm like, wow, that's the point of. But it's good, I mean, we. Well, I think we haven't enough for a month, you guys can really look at it, you can decide whether you think there's something in there, so when we come back, we've got all we wanted.
Although, the one thing that I suggest have added back in is the budget being to the city by a certain time, it's not in the ordinance. It's not a state statute, but I need to do data entry. So I would just suggest for it to be to me by a certain time that was taken out, and I'd like to have that in there, so it's never a question.
We do.
The, the, the report, your annual state statute report, that's in there, but the budget, so that I can put all the.
Okay.
Data entry into our software, that was taken out, I would prefer it to be in there, just so that it's in there, so that is, it is known, it is there, like. I, I just want it by the end.
And I, and I'm wondering, and this is just thinking off the top of my head, but um. And because that's not part of our ordinance or something, if that's why that was taken out.
Yeah, and it, since this is something that I would like to request, I don't see it as a problem, just because.
I, I mean. Well, and it kind of, if, if it's not in our ordinance. We should have it. So like if it's not, then we probably need to have it in on a contract like that, is what I, but yeah, that's why we just need to have it in there.
And, yeah, I don't think it's a hard ask, it's just putting a date into having.
Right, and just know that it's lawyer talking to lawyer.
Yeah, that's why I said, I, we'll see what he writes down.
It's not board talking to city council, it's lawyer talking to lawyer. Yeah. And, and we are trusting. The person that we have hired to do that, so. Because you can read it and it's a lot of.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we get the original document, this document, and then from our lawyers, so we can kind of. Draw a line and match up what doesn't match up, and then maybe before we send it to the lawyer, to have the lawyer look at it, just the only one who's benefiting from this are the lawyers.
So if we could maybe. Relate and say, here, here are the four items that we actually have an issue with.
Well, I can send you the original, this one, and then.
It's it should be in the minutes, I don't remember.
It is, but I don't.
If you wanna look at it before we get to, but I I find to compare them today for like an hour and. I, there is nothing wrong with what we were giving, there are just a couple of things that I thought should be added back into it. Like that. But that's. So. A lot of the things are the same. It just has.
More differently.
Well, it's just worded. Different words, different vocabulary words.
Different lawyer word.
So if the cap is the original. Person's second. There, so. Um, you know, we should table it for a month. I don't know if we really need to do anything.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be back.
Yeah.
Anyway, all right, let's move on to the next one, library director's contract.
Well, that was what they're. You know, they're sending it to the lawyers to look at.
Yeah.
And it's still in the mail. That I haven't talked to him really about, so I don't know what is. I do know that one, there is one statement in there that he was uh very against, and that was that it said that the city can terminate.
The city can what?
Terminate. It is in there, if you, I don't know, I don't remember where it is.
Our lawyer was very adamant that. Library director is an employee of the city. But is managed by the library board.
Which, yeah, that.
And I thought in here.
Directed by the library board, news of the city may terminate this agreement.
But the the board would have to. Come to city council and say. We want the library director terminated. It's not the city making that decision.
No. I don't think that would.
It though wasn't.
If directed by library board to do so, the city may terminate this agreement at any time.
I think it was something else, I think he was talking about, but.
So for, so you've sent it to the.
Yeah.
You're right, okay, then we'll send back. So. For. For the library board. Liaison. These are two huge things that we have to take care of. I think that um. This is very important, we have. We have worked hard um. Basically Sarah Matson and the lawyer to get this to be drafted, and I would like to be able to close out the past and move forward and have it. Clean and know that that. The city's protected, the library director's protected, I'm protected, um, so it would be interesting. So hopefully by our June meeting, we can have both these and. We can be done with this and the library board can work on other things.
So who's drafting this document?
This this document is the library board's attorney, Lindsay Dungle, Dingle.
It's not a big deal, but they might wanna look at the pages.
I, yeah, I saw that. I saw that right off.
Page three and two. Page four.
So once. Again. Who's benefiting the most out of this?
If you want it done by June.
Well, I'm just thinking, maybe we should get. The board, the library board in here and us in here or. Couple of us and just kind of. Go through this individually, then we can send one sheet to the lawyers, like, can you guys approve this?
Cause like, if we get it, which somebody we're gonna get any day, we can, we can, we can. Send it to you guys.
I know.
And then, yeah, and then whether you're gonna take it to, hopefully we can have them all back. You know.
All right, but and I know, I know what I I want, or you know what, how I think it should go, but I'm not a lawyer. And we need to make sure that this is, so if it comes to it, this lawyer's fighting lawyers, it's not. Us fighting them, so.
That's why I think getting the boards together, saying, this is what we all agree on. This is what the board needs to make a lawyer look. Lawyer language look like.
Well, they're both looking at our ordinance and our ordinance is long, and the library act is. Insane, so, I mean. And I mean, our. Our lawyer is our lawyer, but he does know our ordinance really well. You know, he's been here. Just to be some years, so. Not much has changed in our.
Is the compensation the same as it was?
Ours is.
I know that we have not paid them since I worked here.
Are you talking?
I'm talking to this for the librarian. Thirty-five thousand is what.
It's less.
What, tell me, what was that question?
It says that we pay annual salary thirty-five thousand, is that less or more than what we paid?
That that's what Sarah's. The new director's being paid, that's less, that's less than what Sandra Shinos would be paying. And if we question having that amount in there. She wanted, the lawyer wanted it in there, well, if that should change, then we'll just have to do an addendum.
Right, so we're gonna sit on this one too. Then we get the next one. Um, is Sarah okay working on the contract?
She is, she is, I mean, we, yes, um. But we're ready to move on.
Yes. Oh, I I am too.
Me too.
All right, moving forward, uh, next one is the motion to approve the LBCA card. Show street closure. I make the motion to approve that. Any discussion? No issues, Dan?
Are you closing off more than they have in the past?
So there will be a change, it's not a big change, it's just closing off down this way so that we can put the business expo going this way. That would be the only thing that was to change, instead of having the business expo. Down further, we're not gonna go as down further, we're gonna come this way because of having the art walk and everything else this way. So that's kind of what the change was. I said Kim the first point, and then we were like, oh crap, we need to change this, so we had to change it. So that was the only change from. And they had it, we had it going that way before, and it really won't need going that way.
Tim, put your other hand on business, or does that affect you drastically with the interest?
Thank you.
All right, uh.
That's the only change, I don't, there's anything else to.
Any other discussions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion period.
Thank you.
Next, motion to approve Alan Edwards' purchase agreement. I hear somebody over there.
What was the lawyer's feedback on it?
Um, we need to add one statement in. On the property tax, section four. Um, basically to. Say that. They're still will be responsible for liking taxes after the tip is. Then expired. Kim finally got a little Brian, he's on vacation.
Should we be discussing this now or?
Well, we need a second and a approval and a second to discuss it. I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
All right, now we can discuss it.
This doesn't mention anything about tip. Or did I miss it?
No, it's just the purchase, the the land.
This is just the land purchase.
Yeah.
And seller, that would be the city of Langsberg. Shall extend sewer laterals into the land purchased. Um, and shall waive any connection fees, I thought the tip was gonna cover all of that.
The grant.
Wasn't this a requirement to get the ball rolling, so we can submit grants to see what we can do, this isn't approving the project, it's just saying. Contingent upon getting grants.
It's showing that we have.
But this doesn't say that. Does it?
Well, it's just the purchase agreement that, yeah, I I would think it would move forward, like he said, he's not gonna move forward without the tip in place. So we can, we can back up up until. We sign final documents with them. But this would give us the ability to at least get the final name of all those. Numbers, so we can tell if it's actually gonna be as effective in the city or not.
Right, we're not signing the land away yet, this is just saying that.
This would be the agreement, if. Everything else.
It's the first legal documentation, I'm like buying a house. We're gonna buy the house of this, this and this.
Being such a legal document, then why wouldn't it say so?
It does, I think it does, under five, um, closing deadline and contingencies, you have ten days summarizing. After the full and final approval, city of Langsberg had a tip, ground fuel and incentives.
In other words, I. Bruised a little too quickly.
Guess so.
Are you reading that?
That is uh seventy-seven, seventy-seven of one twenty-six, respect.
So he sent out a a new purchase agreement to us two weeks ago, I think it was, um, taking us out of closing, because if you have the original. You can see that we were on for closing costs, I mean, like it'd be very much for dollar.
Hey, that twenty seven.
I know, but he he took us out as the responsible party, should it in the new one, um, but he never. He never put in the provision that Berlin game insists with an explanation. On being in there, um, so Kim finally got a hold of him, and he said it shouldn't be a problem, he's on vacation, but he should be able to get it. This week to us this week with that added provision in there.
Should we even approve this right now?
So.
We can approve it with the amendments of.
So we have to make another motion, so I'll make a motion that we approve this with the amendment from our lawyer and. Has he had something to add, or is that what the lawyer was gonna have?
That's what the lawyer wants him to add.
So the. I'm gonna make from my lawyer.
I second. The. Motion amendment.
Okay, so we have the motion, motion amendment. This is weird.
This is really your, your motioning to approve it with that. With not really a, a method, cause it's gonna be a whole new.
Right.
If he does it, then we're like, we're motioning to approve.
Without the addition, it's not gonna be.
Right.
Okay. All right, clarify that motion.
I'll figure it out.
Any more discussion? No, all right, all in favor for approving this motion with the amendment only? Any opposed? All right, so here.
Uh, RFP is for IT, young lady.
Yes. Please. Yes, please.
They may want more detail than that.
They defense us in the finance.
Yes, we did. So we are.
They say our IT guy is not following up on his job, and she wants to change anything, yeah, so.
And our current IT is.
Uh, I know, but he's called.
Consultants.
Yes.
Is is on call.
It's Michigan consultants, yeah.
But you know that.
The other problem that they ran into is we'll go. A long time without getting billed for anything, and then we'll get slapped with a thirty thousand dollar bill for three years of services that.
Great.
Never really truly happened, right?
Well, I guess, I mean, I have never seen a bill besides for Microsoft.
Right.
Sounds through Google subscription, so.
So are we just looking for approval to let you send out?
No, I sent. I did. Personally reach out to him, told him that we were collecting this, and he never gave me a response. Or for console, so.
Okay, yeah.
So it looks like BlackRock, which I believe is the second one in this. Is a thirty-five hundred dollar one-time charge. And fourteen thousand four hundred dollars a year. And then the first one. Break on is. A five hundred dollar one-time payment and seventy-two sixty-five per year.
The Graycon, um, the nice thing about Graycon is they're mobile. And they, and they do, well, the LSW. Um, and they also. Have other municipalities on ours, I mean, BlackRock does too, but.
Which one do you prefer? Graycon?
It was just cause they're local, I like that.
Yeah, that'll wanna be like forty-five grand for three years.
They have other municipalities, so they, and they they worked with Dan. At LSW, so.
And they've also, I talked to them about the police requirements, and. They beat all the police requirements and what's required from the FBI. Um, fortunately, even Michigan, Michigan consultants. Hasn't kept up on his training that's required. Um, I asked him for his certificates that we all have to have from the FBI and. He hasn't produced those.
Right, so we need a motion in a second.
So I'll make a motion that we. Accept. Uh, the services from Graycon.
Can we still ask questions?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we can discuss. Open subject to either one.
So does this? Include the library?
Yeah.
That's all.
Now.
Yeah, well, we have now included.
Yeah, the other one did too, so yeah. And what is the? Current contract that we're under? We can't find one.
We don't know, we don't, I don't think.
So we don't. We have no idea. We just have to send him a letter saying that we're no longer needing your services and.
Yep.
We, when you did reach out to him, I think I overheard in the meeting earlier, like, offering him.
Yeah, he was.
The chance to respond.
I gave him. A chance to give us a bid to. Your proposal to. Our services have been there, so, but that's not.
All right. And so, go ahead.
Have you talked to the other, I don't understand, but other municipalities to see? Like a reference?
Yeah, and I haven't come across anything. Um, I, he actually, they came here, we're BlackRock, we did a. Like a Zoom. Um, but Mike from Graycon came here. And uh actually looked at everything, see what everything is, and. He even found things just by not getting into anything, but just by looking. This is, there's stuff that's not up to date.
So what's Mike's name?
Mike.
Do you have a last name?
He's from Scenic Lake, I mean, he owns the business, but he's from Scenic Lake, but I, they're big.
Right, thank you, since they. They work with VSA, which is our other software too, right?
BlackRock.
BlackRock.
That was the one thing that I liked about BlackRock, but. We already get that service. Being paid for, he doesn't have any way, so.
Okay, any more discussion? You guys wanna talk about which one we wanna go with, or we pretty much set on the local one? Pricing would do that a lot.
The vote will tell you.
So, all right, motion is on the floor, seconded that we go into local. IT company and we discharge the current one, they lecture. Okay, uh, roll call. Yes.
David.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beavers.
Yes. Moving forward. Motion to approve the mailing of the ad for Village Fresh, so this is out of Perry.
Well, no, we're gonna let you do it.
All right, so we talked to the owners of the food store in Perry. Um, just trying to figure out how we can get a grocery store back in town. They're not. It would cost a lot to revamp. The current building down there to their standards. So what he wants to do is. Send a. He wants to offer delivery to. Not just the city of Langsberg, but a little bit outside of it, like like Victoria, or was it just the city? Okay, just the city limits for a five dollar fee, but anybody could call and order their food, groceries. From Perry and they will bring it out to them. We just need the approval of adding that to.
Well, because, yeah, we need to mail it, because there's. He has a mailing, you know, that goes out to everybody, and it's not just the city limits, so we would have to do a separate mailing just for city limits.
But there is a cost. But it's also to help people get groceries.
But he wants us to assume that cost.
Well, he's going to assume one.
Yeah, cause we're gonna do a couple mailing, so he's gonna pay for one of them.
And then we.
We'll pay for the other one, so it's kind of a fifty fifty thing, just to help the residents.
And then they're. Forward, we will always put it in the newsletters, but this is just to get it out.
It's like a one-time thing.
It's a one-time thing, because, yeah, not everyone looks at newsletters, or not everyone will get into the letter. Um, I tried to work with the uh postal uh office, but I I didn't go very. Not well as I hoped, um. Cause what they do is called direct mail, so they just go in and, but the problem with those routes is it's. One little spot of the of the city, and then all Lake Victoria, and then there's this spot, and it goes. It's one little spot of the, of the city and then all Lake Victoria, and then there's this spot and it goes out to Sciota. And then there's this little portion here and it goes into Wood Hall, so I can't, we couldn't even do that, so the only thing that I could think of was. To send a, a letter to everybody, the weekly ad with that, that ad in, it, and send it to everyone.
Do you have estimated cost of stamps?
Around five, well, stamps, envelopes, printing would be around five hundred dollars.
Oh, five hundred dollars, one-time thing, because we'll land it to the letters in the future.
Right.
He's doing one on his own for about the same amount of price. Um, just to get the residents that need groceries. To be able to get it from them, and they will deliver it, I think just for five dollars.
So is there? Can we not do it? That's not costing us that we say we posted on our website. Um, we will. Facebook page.
He doesn't want.
He only wants.
He just wants to sit, he wants to help Langsberg, God, it's a city.
Well, and I, and I understand that, and as a City of Langsberg residence. But if you, even if you mail that to a city resident. My person that doesn't live in the city is gonna see my flyer at my house and gonna say, oh, I can get. So I mean, it's not like you're.
That can be a secret. It's a secret, but he doesn't wanna get in. Hit with people outside the city saying, oh, well, you do it for the city, why can't you do it for us?
Well, I think he's gonna get that.
He's gonna, I mean, he probably will, but if we can help him in any way to reduce, because he's willing to do this.
Should we have a motion in a second so we can discuss this? Approve a mailing for Village Fresh.
Okay, we got a motion.
But we have to have a second line discussed.
Need to have a second line we can discuss.
Alright, I'm a second.
Okay, so we got motion in a second, to not approve it, so now we can discuss either. Going forward, let's discuss this tomorrow, so.
Yeah, I mean, I. We give our Jordy's going to come too, like, it seems silly to take on a five hundred dollar fee, like, when we. Put that information out and ultimately, the people outside of the city are gonna know about it, so I guess, I feel like the purpose of mailing it is so that. He isn't exposed to people outside of the city finding out about it, but that's gonna happen regardless, whether we take out a five hundred dollar expense or not.
I also think that you're gonna reach more by giving like. I mean, I personally hardly ever use social media.
Who, who are we intending to get this to? The senior citizens, I can take the flyer to my board meeting and we can post it at, um. Looking Glass Terrace, that takes care of going back households for free. I, I, I appreciate them doing this, but it's five hundred dollars that, I, I don't know, I.
Has it been a concern, I have senior citizens express concern about the.
When Sage first went out, yes. I don't care about now, but. It just, he just brought it to our attention and he'd be willing to do that, because we asked him, like, come look in the building, see what we can do about getting a grocery store in here.
Um, we do also have a grocery store sort of.
A Dollar General.
A limited grocery store, but there's probably some stuff and like, by paying five hundred dollars. Towards that, it kind of takes away. Such as it's there as well, so I'd consider.
Is it akin to what we were talking about at the town hall, though, like, with the warming centers during power, like, like, literally as the council saying? If we have people in the town who are struggling or inconvenienced because of something outside of their control.
Yep.
Do we not have a responsibility to do something to support those individuals and? If they are people who are struggling to get to a grocery store, they probably don't have means to. Voice or would have less means to voice their issues. You know, if they can't drive to Meyer, they're not driving up the city at all to complain about it.
Right, I mean, I think this is a really good idea. It, it, the delivery in itself. And I wish it wasn't a five hundred dollar fee and let everybody in town know.
Much to the second grader goal for.
Does it have to be a letter, can we do a postcard and do that postage?
I think.
Give you a three-by-five card, it costs you twelve, fourteen cents.
You wanted to post it with the weekly ad, I mean, we could go with whatever you guys decide, if you wanna try to do a postcard. That would cut the price almost in half. But then I have to print, we have to print on a postcard.
Yeah.
We'd have to buy the postcards.
Now.
When would our next scheduled mailing be?
Next quarter.
Right, but we're.
Or you mean like you put it on the newsletter?
Yeah, I mean, we're halfway through this second quarter. So.
Is it immediate need?
As I, is it something we can say we'll print them off and send them in our July?
Well, we were gonna do that.
Right, so. Does it need to be right this second, I guess, is what. Right.
The postcard, uh, it's not your talking to.
Can we handle it, or group volunteers to handle it on every house in the city? Do that, I volunteer my time to do that, to save five hundred dollars.
Probably get the road mileage pass.
I mean, I. Care either way, I don't think the five hundred's really that much money when it comes to the amount of money we're spending on other things, I mean, even though I support them. What we're spending at the boat launch, we're probably not getting our money back out of that, but it's, it's an added attraction to those people that kayak, I'm not a kayak or boat, whatever. If this would help, I don't think it's gonna be used that much, but if it does help a few senior citizens and it gets them what they need, it's. It's what we're do, like you said, if we can do a heating warming center, we can do helping someone get groceries and maybe it might lead to a different. Group of jumping in to do something. Anyway, go either way. Seriously, could, could these be delivered, is there any legality issues with that, like, you can't put them in a mailbox, right?
You can't put them in a mailbox, but you can put them on their front door, in the doorway, you can give them in their hand, that you can easily do to.
You can get your running. For on weekends to do that.
I'm serious, I, I would volunteer, I don't, how many houses, yeah?
Well, there's sports, number of residents in this city.
Go to the apartments, you have to.
Say a taxpayer wants to succeed a politician. Then I gotta explain it to.
Well, I mean, there's other, or like, we can get the dancers to help, we can get NHS to help, there's other people that can help. Would be kind of more meaningful to get.
I like the idea of a twine, not like asking one of the churches, don't have a youth group that should do it or something. I think you did absolutely good volunteers.
Why not make the best of both, why not say, we'll budget up to five hundred dollars to donate to. Organizations in town to get this and deliver, we could support robotics, we could support boy scouts, girl scouts. Throw them a little bit of money, they need it, we're giving them hand-delivered. And I think you'd rather see a boy scout working up to your goal than a politician.
The girls do, the boys do not.
That's, you get one Samoa cookie with every.
Alright, so the motion on the, on the floor is to not approve the five hundred dollar mailing. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, let's do all in favor to not approve. Alright, does that make sense?
To not approve.
The mailing, all in favor do not approve the mailing.
Then we can then later make.
We need to get this one off the table. All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
We all said aye to.
So we're not approving.
Additional discussion now.
The emotion person. Well, we need to bring up a motion to further go, then we can discuss.
When you, when you say. He said aye, no one else should.
So everybody approved to not do it. It was old-fashioned. Nothing wrong with that.
That would. Make a motion. Make a motion to, um, donate to a local cause, as Jason suggested. Up to the amount of the mailing. Uh, in order to have that organization deliver them to. It's very complicated.
Deliver what?
The flyer to all residents.
So a motion to donate five hundred dollars to help somebody hand out. Postits for the, uh, five dollar grocery store delivery in a second. Now we can discuss this one.
This is, in a, so the owner of the store is paying for a mailing of his own.
Yes, he is.
Of the same thing to all residents, why do we need a second?
In his experience with grocery stores, it takes a couple of. He owns a lot, he owns a couple stores down in Detroit as well, Perry is the first one he has in the country.
So if he's doing one mailing, why can't we? Do our Facebook page. Are posting at Looking Glass, are. Something that's not costing us money or. We're already doing one mailing.
We encourage, but we don't spend money on it. That's what you're saying.
Yeah, and I think we, and I get, I get. The being there for the service, but what happens when? Um, Bath, the wit, or Meyer comes to us. And says, we're gonna offer the same thing and we start advertising for us, because we're, we're the same distance. Well, we'll, we'll deliver to. But, but just, what if they start coming to us and I?
Walmart also delivers to Langsberg.
So I think if, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable advertising that, I think it's wonderful that he's doing that, but. I think the whole idea was, uh, he cannot buy, or he cannot rent that building. And move in there the way it is, it's gonna cost you too much money, and this was his kind of like, I'm only gonna do it for five bucks. You know, delivery fee, which is, I don't know how he's doing it, because I think it's always money, but. I think that was, he was just trying to find a way to, to help the city of Langsberg, that just off the.
Do we have any information about how you even order the groceries, truly, call in?
Well, the people that are gonna use it are.
Social media.
Yeah, I mean.
I want the moment. And this is Langsberg only, he's not doing this for any other communities.
It's a good thing.
Well, if it is a money issue, then maybe we just reach out to some local groups and ask for their help distributing them and.
I know a great fundraiser, that's a good. Adam, can you shrink just a smidge?
Stay right there.
From my point of view, yeah, it's gonna cost a little bit of money, yes, it could go to something else, but. What really is two hundred and fifty dollars gonna go to? Besides helping. Thirty to forty people that families, that's my.
What's the two hundred and fifty dollars?
And that's what the postcards. Because if we print the postcards out, which would be cheaper. We don't have to do that, or we can do the flyer, I mean, I don't know which one's cheaper, easier.
I mean, if you're gonna hand deliver them. Paper would be cheaper than.
Five of us could just forego getting paid for this meeting. Postcards delivered.
Be done.
I volunteer for that. And if it gets us.
So all we have on the floor to donate five hundred dollars to an organization that will help candies out by hand.
To the amount of the mailing. To the amount of the mailing.
Uh, two or five hundred?
He said five hundred dollars.
Not up to.
I thought I said, uh, to the amount of the mailing. But I mean. Potato, potato.
Are you guys gonna choose an organization now, because how are we?
Point, if, so we're not here all night. If we did a postcard and we just mail it out, you're assuming that's two hundred and fifty?
Well, it, it's gonna be roughly between two fifty and three fifty, I'm not, because I don't wanna.
The postcard stamps are gone up, but not as much as the regular.
Or he could do his flyer now, and we can do our mailing.
Yeah, I don't know what the schedule was. But, man, we didn't discuss when he would do this.
We do the second one on July first in our sewer bills.
Yes, you, you can.
Yes, you can.
Or we could just vote it down. I question about withdrawing.
I, did anybody talk about that one?
Yeah.
I think.
What, I didn't.
Three hundred and eight dollars.
So, can. Can I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
I take a motion that, you know, we. That we send out our mailing in the sewer bills July first. We're already doing that, that's not, you don't need a motion for that, because we're.
If he's doing his first one, in the next two or three weeks, I don't know when he.
He supposedly should be the cycle right now.
With the flyer that you.
The flyer and the ad is supposed to be his round, it'd be this week.
Okay, but that's then, you know.
Today, today's Tuesday.
We hit them again, and then we start putting it on our social media forum. When I think, which, no one, during itself. But the, the sewer bill was not hitting apartments. Um, all, anybody, that, that doesn't, that they don't pay sewer.
Looking Glass Terrace would need to be.
So those places could have a, a letter.
Right.
Put down the bulletin board.
Yes.
In addition, they're going to get a letter from.
Could be approved with expense to just mail newsletter to everyone that doesn't get a sewer bill. Then that's covered, and then as an interim solution.
And that would be.
We could post these at the library, maybe the city hall. The businesses that wouldn't be competing, I mean, I don't know that Colin Tubman's one up there, but, but they might, who knows?
So you have a motion.
My motion.
What was your motion?
Is.
I remember.
My motion is to send this out in the July sewer bill.
Which we don't really need to.
No, we don't need that motion, because it's gonna be done.
Alright.
What we need a motion for is if you want it to be mailed to anyone who does not get a sewer bill.
Send the flyers to any residents that don't get the sewer bill.
Any discussion on this one?
Well, no.
Alright, all in favor, say aye. Alright, that motion is carried. I think we all see the importance. You all told me it was gonna be a long meeting, I'm making it as fast as I can.
So. We have like, read this over the head, CIP. I wanted some detail more today, looking at it, uh, in. I believe it's in the master plan that goes into great detail about what the CIP plan is for, what is. I read it all. Trying to figure out what the process is, if you guys have ideas you wanna put out there right now. We can put them, approve them, put them on there, but I would really like to have, um, Mike from Spicers. Go over and off when we update the master plan to make sure we don't need to come back and do some adjusting.
We have a grant for that, that.
Yeah, definitely, that's why, I, I might, but I, I think there's some people that do have ideas and we wanna put those on there. But as far as like, I know that you guys wanna be updated and you wanna, you know, that stuff, I wanna talk with Mike first. And be, because after reading it all. There's this big, long process of when we started it with the master plan, and it all goes with the master plan, that is why we started the CIP. So I just wanna make sure that we're doing it all, because if we find out that technically, the mayor. The treasurer. The, um.
Finance chair.
The finance.
CPW.
And it's from planning. And it's from planning, you're the ones who's supposed to be getting it together and approving it after it went through all of the paperwork. So. If you guys got the ideas, you can put them on there, you can approve what you wanna put on there right now. And then. We'll wait a little bit so I can talk to Mike and figure out what goes with. Make sure it's completely the way it's supposed to be in the master.
For two weeks, but ideas to get, I don't know, get done with Mike.
Or do you need it like right now?
I would like to have him right now, yeah, so that we can make sure that the budget and everything is in with the budget and there are people. That are sitting here that have ideas. I know we talked about the Woodbury Road. Um. Yep. So, you know, that's something everybody wants on. Vote that to be put on. Um, Scott had some, um, other ideas that he emailed me. Um, I thought I'd let you explain some of the things that you wanted to.
No, I, I, it just wishlist thing that I think we should continue with. Pre-planning and in our parks and in our streetways, tree escaping. Um, we're, I was talking with consumers a little bit about looking at doing some grants for, um. Going with solar and wind with a lot of our vacant land, you see all these solar fields out there. See what we can do in that direction to lessen the burden on our electric bill. Um, sidewalk replacements, the, the traditional stuff I wanna keep. In there, but just some of that other, I can't remember, but it's.
Yeah, I mean, it was, you know, the, the regular stuff that's, that's still on there that, you know, like sidewalks are probably never gonna be done. It's gonna be a. I think the parks. Need to be on there, I mean, we do have Batesville fixing problems that Batesville, but I also. Think we need to have them on there to always be, being updated because we need. New stuff down there in the Clintac, so. And that's our newest part, so. And I think bakes should be included in there, just the maintenance stuff, you know, placing stuff.
Crushing the pavilion would be, that's.
Yeah, fixing the amphitheater, the amphitheater needs some work on it, you know, I mean. Those are all things, the parks, I think the parks can go in as one. Thing, everything in the park needs to be maintained and updated. Putting money aside, so if there is something huge. You've got that. I, after reading the stuff, it looks like everything has to be like over five thousand dollars. That goes. So, you know. And these are the things that can help us in Christ. Because, you know, there's a lot of stuff out there for parks and so, and so we have it in our CIP plan and in our master plan. You know, it looks like that's what we're trying to do and grants look at that and go, oh, they, we can help them. More gift and stuff. So. But you want our ideas? Yeah. Yeah, so the path that was taken away. In most of them, Zach.
Uh, yes. Not the path, yeah.
Just access something, yeah. Did, has anybody, um, from a softball board contacted City Hall about a softball field?
They're supposed to come in last month and whatever, they're supposed to come to DPW and I.
I bet told they're coming in my last.
I talked directly with them and they still have not shown up.
Okay, I, I, they, I mean, Brandon August from the baseball came in.
Brandon softball.
Just if that, if that can.
Okay.
Softball field.
I think that would go all under park.
Yes.
Because we wanna keep it so it's enough, you know, enough going in, because you have to keep it oversized nine thousand dollars, then we'll just. Put all that into parks, updating the parks and making sure that things are getting done and you can use.
I just didn't know if that wording needed to be in there, so.
I don't think so, I think it's kind of, you know, if you have it in there, you have it in there, that's what your plans are, and so in, in. When you say parks and you wanna do something that for a grant, they're gonna look, oh, you have it in your.
Woodbury Road sidewalk, my suggestion, I don't know, it's already on there, I should rewrite it.
I'm curious if they would allow us to just have like walkable community and then you could put all the list of sidewalks that you wanna do. Cause that would make it nice, cause that, that was something that came up the best compared to the, uh, survey was.
Right.
Walk the community. The tree plant, were you still looking at, I mean, the tree city?
So, the, the Tree City USA will do that in the fall. Um, I can use everything that we've done this year. And then, uh, to apply for it or next year and it's pretty simple, so.
And then, we get the consumer. We apply for it, we've gotten it every time we've applied for it, so. That's a yearly thing we do too.
I'm careful improvement if we could add, to Scott's point, um, maintaining the trees in the right ways, there's a lot of. Trees should probably be removed and then a budget to replace those. Before we have infrastructure issues.
Part of the Tree City USA is having a tree ordinance. That we will have to create and pass and that is all the stuff that they wanna see. So, that's one thing, it's mandated to have. Before you can come.
Okay.
And now we got a tree guy. Bigger thing, the people.
I mean, improving the, the. Interactive part of the gorge. Bridges and.
All the pathways.
That's. Near the, nearing the end of its life.
Yeah. Yeah, we.
Going about thirty years.
Ninety-five. The park at the golf course.
Walking.
It's an interactive walk trip.
Have you ever walked up?
Many times. I love the little picnic table at the end of it. Yeah, I mean, I need some work, but, um, before I was there, they kinda let it go. Yucky stuff, so we're trying to get it back, well, it's taking a while. All you gotta wanna see. Street lights with solar panels. I'm just.
Very expensive, just FYI.
I, I like the idea of a solar, I, first thing, thing I thought of was street street. Solar panels over there.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of nice because it's not my fault, you know, when people complain about it.
We got a tree.
Put it somewhere else.
Well, lagoons is a great place to have them too. Like solar.
Costful. The revenue we'll get from that will pay for the. Overnight, that quick.
You're just gonna hide the dredge underneath the panels? So you're just gonna hide the dredge under the panels?
Next to the contaminated soil from.
But a pickleball court instead of the nose court.
You said ideas.
Um, yeah, well.
I, I mean, you want pickleball in there?
You asked for it, you asked for it. It's just a thought. We find a spot and put it, put it out there.
I, can I, I mean, I'm on there, right, the treasurer is on there, I would love to do it, I don't, I would like to do it. I think they're. Really fun, I think it's something great for the community to get out. I've seen them in a couple of places, um, during soccer tournaments and they're always packed with. Adults or kids being, being used.
People in the town.
Yeah.
We just gave you the social district.
Alright, other ideas for CIP stuff?
Any, um, like, well. Charging stations for electric vehicles, electric vehicles?
We haven't had any. It's a thong.
I looked into it.
Dan, what'd you find out?
Quarter mill to start.
Ooh, that's definitely one five thousand.
That might be something where there's grants, so.
Do you guys have any experience with charging stations?
Yeah, we've, we've had them in a few different locations, um. There are some grant funds available to be able to try to offset some of those costs, they, they tend to be. Pretty healthy and then you gotta make sure you got a infrastructure and the support.
Um, that's why I was looking into a battery buffer, because I assumed. That we don't have enough. Infrastructure and the battery buffer doesn't care.
Yeah, that definitely would help it, um. Uh, we'd have to check to see, you know, where it'd be, where it would be placed and. What, what service would be pulled off from there.
That's what I was gonna hear. Um, and we've got three days right here. Two. Um, but.
Probably can handle it on the grid, it's usually when you start lining up a bunch of.
Alright, other ideas? Well, Kim's telling me like you guys have tons of ideas. Splash pad.
Yeah, I thought about that. Oh, yeah. It's like a bike.
It's like a bike pad made out of asphalt, we're North Lansing has one, Slapford has one. Kids riding their bikes, they got, they got.
Kind of like our skate park.
It's like more of a bike thing, it's like, is it all solid cement?
It's asphalt.
Yeah, I mean, it's all solid, it's like, yeah.
Yes.
You have a splash pad up.
That was number one thing on the survey. The, not that, the last one, but the one before.
We also talked about a Euro ice skating rink.
Euro.
Yep, it's, it's made out of, um. So like Lansing has one, I think St. John's might have one.
Proplane?
Meridian Township has. Yeah, they break, our Meridian Township has one that goes out. Around the Trowbridge North side.
Do we own the, all the land between the lagoons and where the kayak crack is going and is there? And what I'm getting at is like a possible bike rack, or not a bike rack, like a bike path or something?
Uh, that, that, once we get that out there. Um, then we would be able to apply for grants for walking paths from there to out, out by the.
Woods.
Yeah.
I would love a walking path in or bike trails.
That, we're spending grants that have come around, but we didn't have any place to go, so not, that was one thing that we were like, oh, if we get that out there, then we can. Apply for these grants that are the walking path. And from there to hook it up with the one.
Like the boat launch opens the doors up for a lot more grants, that's, that's what we.
Especially the, you know, distant stuff like that, when walking paths and bike paths.
Not that that's the only spot.
You got any crazy ideas that we could add in? You see a lot worse than the.
What, what about? Library, does that fall under CIP or is that, are we separate?
Um. I'm.
I don't know.
I don't know. I mean.
The building.
I mean, we, we, we have the maintain, the building has a city on it, but.
So we could.
Also, I'm gonna say library expansion.
Okay.
However, and whether that falls under there or not, and however that expansion, whatever that would.
I'll find out. Um, is there anybody opposed to any of these? I mean, we're gonna lump them together, you know, to.
I'm a tennis player. Has that totally more than they had a pickleball thing going? Alright, anymore, or we wanna oppose the CIP section? Alright. Let's moving on to.
Approve this.
Oh, oh, we need to approve this, okay. No, you're just looking for ideas. Alright, all in favor for approving the new ideas to the CIP? All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed, that's approved.
Except no emotion.
I'll make a motion to add to the CIP, is that my turn?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
There we go, alright.
And let's start the discussion.
Okay, so all, all in favor of adding to the CIP? Say hi. Anybody approve? Now we can move forward to committee reports. I know we have one or two that need to be brought up, cause I know police has something.
Yeah, do go through that while we wanna start with. Dan, you want me? Dan, alright, uh, and the police committee, uh, meeting tonight, Dan brought up, um, his desire to. Purchase two new defibrillators for the police vehicles. Um. The cost of that, I don't think you guys have this document, uh, retail cost is three thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. What the police department is able to do is trade in two of those. Um, yeah. A credit of three hundred fifty dollars, and then they also recently received a three hundred dollar donation to the police department. From resident that they did. Let me check on. And, um. So basically Dan's total cost for this would be three thousand three sixteen ninety-eight. All of which he has budgeted for already, like our approval to spend that in order to purchase this.
The thing that's special about it is you don't need to order any pads, it's, it's one pad per dollar, children. For that would save expenses, what else you got?
And this one goes with a eight-year warranty, the AEDs that we currently have are. On the, uh, FDA's website is no longer usable, but it still works. So, we need to actually update those.
In the twelve years that they've had, I think they've used it four times, so.
And that, well, yeah, the nine years I've been here, we've used them four times, so. One success, so twenty-five percent, and that's kind of. You're going right for cardiac arrest for a while. But.
But is there something that, something that he's already had, um, budgeted for as well, so I guess I would make the motion to approve that. Yes, second it.
And discussion. Hey, motion to approve purchase of the new AEDs, which is already budgeted, let's see, roll call. Just to make it as well.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes. Alright, any other committees that wanna bring anything up for discussion?
Yes, the finance committee, um. More municipalities are coming up with election pay. With how. Time consuming and extra time consuming. Um, they are, they have been giving the. Clerks, yes, I'm thinking of treasurer, I'm like, that's not the right word, they have been giving clerks. Pay for doing the elections because, um, like the last one, that was probably. Kim said the smallest one she's got, she spent a total of four days on, including a Saturday, which. Paid day for her. Um. They've done it a couple of different ways, they've been doing, some of them have done it in bonuses. Um, some of them have done it as you just get a little bit of extra pay throughout the year. Um, and some of them have done, you get. Extra like vacation days. I'm talking with Kim, she doesn't necessarily. Care about the bonus or how it comes or vacation days, she just kind of would like to see a little bit of, uh. Benefit for spending her time.
About thirty, like this last election, it was about thirty-two hours. And I worked over nine forty hours.
So. I guess the thing would be, I think we should bring this back next month to talk about during city council. But each one of us should come up with what they think would be a fair. Compensation for. The clerk doing that aspect of the job because it's so much beyond what would be on the be asked.
There goes the volunteer, but.
But is, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is. And I know. It's a lot. But is that not part of the clerk's job?
It is part of the clerk's job and the reason why that there, that municipalities and towns are paying more is because. Elections have become so much more. So, you know, normally you, you could do that in your, you know, but now you gotta work the weekend, now you gotta go to training. Now there's nine days of early voting, there's so much more time that we're spending. Getting ready for election that. That it was, it was suggested two years ago and. County clerk came in here and suggested it and she went to every municipality because. People are not. There's a shortage of clerks. And it's because of.
Will you, would you be able to give us the average of? Like um at each election, how much time you had put in so that we'll know?
Well, this was the smallest election that I do, the special election, and it was thirty-two to thirty-two hours that I put in just for the election outside of the forty hours that I work, the daily stuff that I do.
You did say during the finance meeting that. Comp time would be.
Yeah, I, you know, yeah, I don't think, I personally don't think it's fair that I would get a raise to do the elections, I think it's more fair. To pay cur election because there could be like this year, I could potentially only have one election. So being compensated for the one election instead of all year round, no matter if I election or not, I think it's a, it should be, you know, an election would get something.
Your hours, so.
I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I I don't because we're on salary, so I don't. Usually keep track, we went through today and did how much time I put in for this election. I've done it before and I put seventy hours in, you know, in a in a election before when it's a bigger election. So, yeah, I'm more. I mean, I, the, you know. Being compensated for that, all that extra hours that I do put in, um. It's. Fine and I get it and whatever, anybody else want, but I would be fine just. Getting that time back. You know, being, yeah, half time.
Hour for hour.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I I mean, if that came down to where you you wanted it hour for hour or if it's just a set. Time or, you know, that that doesn't matter to me, but. When we know. And, you know, on top of the extra hours and that, so depending for meetings and stuff too, so, you know, that's part. You know, that's what I knew I'd get with you, maybe I had to do, but I also have those plus all the election hours and how about that too?
It was that factored into the Cleveland budget? Already, I thought the full time wages for clerk. If I'm reading correctly, we're already most of fifty percent increase.
No, that's because. Um twenty-nine percent of her hours were hidden in the sewer.
Uh.
That's why that.
Yeah, I didn't get that.
Through and look at our allocation table, that would be the first thing to change because there's no way twenty-nine percent of our. So that's why that's such a big difference, yeah.
Cause yeah, trying to read these.
Yes.
Can you do a budget that just shows all the wages and the wage increases as a?
Yeah, the, I emailed you guys the maybe after the last meeting, the. Um, budgeting. Oh. It will budget.
I might, I think, I don't think I got it, yeah.
That's gonna be on. The agenda next one.
Yeah. Just to make it easy, can you just add a section of comp time to your agreement?
Yeah, we would amend my contract.
And then that. I I mean, ultimately, I mean, I don't think we need to approve every election, but between the mayor and. You, I mean, if you're working it and you put in for it, you would approve it and you don't have to worry about if it's a long election.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you, yeah, you want me to keep track of the hours for hours type, if it was a uh comp time thing, yeah, then it would probably just be put in. With a regular pay, with my pay, whatever, everything that I worked over and then that would be. Okay. Which evolved. Memory. Like in the payable.
All right, so we'll. Put this on the next agenda to approve it, so we'll get some information. So if you guys have questions to ask her before the meeting, don't ask mathamian so we can get it done.
Yeah, for the record, I support, I think that's, but I'm gonna be here at the next meeting, so I won't have a vote, but.
It's not a one who actually put it up, I didn't.
Yeah, I also will be out of state the next um on my game. What's that?
June meeting?
Yes, June, I leave June third, like.
Hey, your wheels commence.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that, do we have a forum here? Well, and if not, we reschedule or whatever.
If Kim's. Fair and reasonable improvement about the the the. Comp time, if. Why we just get it over with?
You guys are doing it now?
I'm, I mean, I'm okay with that, I was gonna go with it anyway, just.
Or do you have something more in mind?
No. If anybody else had any other ideas or wanted time to think about it, that's kind of what. I was.
He was on the finance.
Right. Right.
We don't have to be a government about everything. All right, well, we'll do six months.
Do me a motion.
I make the motion that we grant Kim. Comp time for. Elections. Yeah, it's not really.
Labor.
I wanted to say it.
Election labor.
Um for.
Hours worked over.
Yeah, uh massage.
Is it? Hour by hour then, like if you work seventy hours, that'd be like an extra two weeks of vacation.
Cause it'd be over forty.
Yeah.
If you work seventy.
You saying that you do an additional seventy hours?
Yeah, and the on the. November elections, yeah.
Presidential ones.
Yeah. Um but yeah, I'm I'm good with. You know. Forty hour comp time for. You know, like. My, you know, if I even like this one, it was thirty-two. You know, I do that, I don't expect to get.
Do like hour for hour. Election.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it should be a maximum possibility.
I don't think it works because when she's gone, her clerk work's still here piling up, so when she gets back.
All right, so we need a second on the motion.
Second on the motion.
What is the?
Motion is to grant Kim the comp time. Um would work for the elections.
No more than forty hours.
That wasn't added in.
That's that's what I said.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion on this one? All right. All in favor? All right, all right, any opposed? You were approved. All right, any more committees?
Library. We have a lot going on, we're meeting um at least. Twice a month. So I might make motion that I get paid that fifty dollars. There's a lot of good stuff, um Sarah, you know, came introduced herself tonight, she went to Sciota, um. Last night. Came back with a check. Um so things, things are looking good, um working on a lot of policies, um. We just approved circulation policy and so things are, things are. Moving, I'm excited. I'm excited to get these. Other things documented and done and um be able to move on, but.
We like the fact that Sarah can call us anytime.
Yes, she does, and that. Friends of library are doing the used book sale during um springtime festival, so that will be exciting, so go buy those books you've been wanting to get and. Be in the parade, so there, there's a lot of good things, summer reading program will be happening, but um. Sarah's managing, Sarah Danford's managing the Facebook page, um. That my website, so, yeah, a lot of. A lot of good things happening now.
Any other committees?
D P W just.
All right, anything else, should we circle back to the grocery store plan?
We're gonna have a man. And everybody's noticed all the trees in the park?
No.
All right, no other business to discuss? Three, two, one, we are adjourned.
We're on before nine o'clock, Missy.
You can't leave either.
I can leave, right?
You wanna go back to?
You're now in finance meeting and.
Yep, better bring it back, I counted how many pages are in there. Good question, sir.
Yeah.
That was not a time, you should have done that before.
You're welcome.
This is a hefty stack of bills.
I guess. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, Neil, I should have introduced myself.
Thank you, guys.
You're hammered.
Yeah. Yeah, appreciate your time.
Thanks for your time today.